I'd like to call the neighborhood commission meeting to order. This is Monday, May twenty second, two thousand and twenty-three. It's a minute after six P M. So we'd like to start with the first item. A roll call of members. If I could start with that, can you call the rule?
Absolutely. Jonathan Ching. Just FYI, we just spoke to him, he'll be joining in just a few moments. Melendrez.
Present.
Bernal.
Present.
Here.
And our newest member, Clark.
Sure.
All right, thank you. We have four members present, one short of four. So let me maybe get, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next item on our agenda is public concerns. Uh, do we have any public concerns? Before you start, I'd like to ask you if you do raise your hand and speak. Uh, please turn on, uh, your video if you can. And, um, this person has an opportunity to speak. Uh, we'll give you two minutes and we'll, we'll time the, um, the speaker. So, who have any hands?
Yes, first one will be, uh, Mr. Li.
Yeah, I see Mr. Li's hand is up, so, uh, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Um, in the period of public concerns, I'll just note that I did have a chance to speak with Executive Secretary Yonanaka earlier today. And he pledged to address some of the questions that I had posed in this forum over the past couple of meeting cycles that had not yet been addressed. So I really hope that, uh, we'll be able to get some, uh, resolution of those issues that are documented in the previous meeting minutes. Uh, but my question today is this. I just seek some clarification regarding the non-sunshine law portion of the meetings that appear to be happening after the regular meetings of the commission. And it's, it, notice made that, um, to be in accordance with H R S ninety-two dash six. Uh, H R S ninety-two dash six provides specific exclusions for all the sunshine law rules with which we are familiar for adjudicatory functions, including adoption of conclusions of the law. And, uh, I just wonder if that's what's going on in this after-meeting meeting time. And it is a, an adjudicatory function to address items such as in H R S ninety-one-nine about contested cases was timely notice given to all parties, including all the elements that are mandated in section ninety-one dash nine B. And I don't know if anyone present can answer that, but if not, hopefully we can get an answer or addressed during next month's meeting. Thank you, and I'll yield back.
I'll address that.
Yeah, Kevin, thank you. Kevin, I can probably give you a longer answer, but the short answer is yes. Um, and, and, you know, and it is, we are convening that section based on the advice of our court counsel. Um, the people that are involved, if, if the, if it is a situation where the commission would like them to be part of the meeting, then we will notify them. Um, in the case of tonight, I will speak to Mr. Armstrong directly in that uh, what we would like to do during tonight's session is, uh, during that section is basically identify a time that we can have the meeting, the hearing that he has requested, because he filed an appeal. Um, so, you know, Baba, just, you know, when we get to that section, basically it's what is, we want to schedule that hearing and it's just a question of what your time is like. So, anyway, um, we'll, we'll, what we'll probably do in that section is that we will end the regular sunshine law meeting, then we'll go into the adjudicatory session. Um, I would ask Bob that if you would not be part of that in the beginning, and then after the commission has a chance to discuss it, then I will call you back in and see what your availability, because I just got to coordinate with everybody. But, um, anyway, when we get to that point, I'll explain a little bit more. Um, but to answer your question, Kevin, yes.
Thank you, and I apologize, I did not know you were there, I don't see you on screen, so my apologies.
Yeah, I, I apologize too, because I'm gonna have to adjust that camera a little bit so I can be on screen. Yeah, we're gonna have our trusty assistant. Me, not that I need to be, need to have screen time, but, okay, okay, there you go, okay, okay. Anyway, thank you, okay.
Yeah, I don't see any other hands raised, uh, under public concern, so we'll move on. Uh, we don't have quorum at this time, so we cannot act on the approval of minutes, so I'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is, uh, the two thousand and twenty-three neighborhood board elections. Um, as you may all know, uh, online vote ended this past Friday on May nineteenth. And if there were any ballots that mailed or postponed by the nineteenth, and they will be counted. Um, I'll let Lloyd explain the rest of ballot counting, uh, process and, um, publishing up to the results.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, just a reminder that, um, you know, we are in the waiting period, so we will wait until Friday, May twenty-sixth for any last-minute, um, postmark ballots. Um, ballot counting is going to happen on Tuesday, May thirtieth, right here in this room that we're in, Kapalama Halli, room one-five-three. And we have reserved a room from eleven to, and will probably be done well before three o'clock, but eleven to three. The, um, the public is invited. Um, and we don't think, we don't take up that much room, but basically we will unlock the ballot box and then open up the ballot, uh, envelopes and do a counting. It's done, it's done automatically through a machine that runs through a printer, um, then we'll get the results. The, those results from the ballots, uh, paper ballots will be combined with the online voting, and we should have a preliminary vote count on, on Tuesday, the thirtieth. The election results, uh, the final will be published on Thursday, which is June first. But, um, you know, you're all welcome to come down, and like I said, it'll, it'll be not the final, um, but I would assume it would not change. Uh, I just want to say that because officially, we're required to publish it on June first, so. You know, welcome everybody to come by and visit with us.
Okay, thanks, Lloyd. Um, I'd like to note, I see, uh, Jonathan Ching upon the screen, so I believe we can note that we, we have, uh, five members, so we have quorum at this time. So, like to move on to the next item on our agenda, Executive Secretary's report, Lloyd.
Yeah, they, they're, really the only thing I have to report, would like to report is that, uh, as we all know, we were doing in an, in the middle of an election. Uh, we intend to have an installation ceremony on Saturday, July first, two thousand and twenty-three, and we are looking at holding it at the Filipino Community Center, at the Philcom Center in Waipahu. Uh, we will send out the invitations, but right now I can tell you it'll, the entire ceremony and uh, a bit of a training as part of it, will run from nine o'clock to two o'clock approximately. Just letting you all know ahead of time, uh, I think it'll be a happy event for those who are invited and attending, and that means they, they won their election. But, uh, right now, we are looking at Saturday, July first, nine to two o'clock.
Thank you, any, any questions? If not, uh, thanks, Lloyd. I'm sure we're all looking forward to that. Uh, we're gonna move on to Commissioner Melendrez. I'm sorry, oh, Commissioner Melendrez.
Thank you, just one quick question. Um, Lloyd is a reason why we're not doing it downtown?
We just wanted to do it in, in a different area. We, we realized that every, almost every time it's done, it's done in downtown. Um, and we wanted to do it in an area that was, you know, other than downtown, just to give people an opportunity to work shorter drive. I realized that for some, it's a longer drive, but there was no special reason other than it was an opportunity to hold it at, at a place that was central to, uh, Machu Picchu. Uh, I also, I also, you know, wanted a place that we could all sit in the same room. And the Philcom provided that opportunity a lot more than, you know, for instance, the, the auditorium downtown, downtown. Um, I am hopeful we'll get a lot of people, we'll see, we'll see how many people actually RSVP, but there was no specific reason other than it was an opportunity to go outside of our normally, our normal habit.
Understood, yeah, the, uh, auditorium's been our tradition for years, and, uh, Tahr's been a great place, so that, that was the reason for the question.
Okay.
Next question we have is Michelle Matson.
Here, we another, have another hand up, I see the hand, but I don't see the person. Can you turn on you? Uh, Michelle Matson.
Thank you, sir. I just agree with, I do agree with Commissioner Melendrez. Downtown at Honolulu Halli has been the traditional location for the prestigious prestigious ceremonies of inducting new neighborhood board members. Why is this being relegated to a lesser location to diminish the importance of the neighborhood boards? I would like to ask why the executive secretary is doing this.
Well, I think he already answered that question, but if you have anything further to add, Lloyd.
No, go ahead. No, I just thought it would be a great place.
Hands raised at this time.
Are there any other hands? I don't see any other hands. Hey, thank you. Um, we are going to move on to new business at this time. Uh, we have forums, so we can take action on these, these items. Uh, the first item under new business is election of officers. And, um, due to the departure of our orator, Kevin Ratkow, and we, we have a vacancy, that's why I'm presiding at these meetings now as vice chair, so, uh, do we have any nominations for chair at this time? Our commissioner, Melendrez.
I nominate Vice Chair Oshiro.
This is John, Commissioner Ching, I second, uh, Commissioner Melendrez's motion.
Yeah, is there any, are there any further nominations? If not, uh, are we ready for the, uh, question? Seeing on, um.
I move we close.
I'm sorry?
I move we close the nominations.
Okay.
Let me do a roll call.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Uh, the motion on the table, uh, was the nomination by Commissioner Melendrez, uh, for Richard Oshiro to be the chair of this commission. Ching.
I.
Thank you. Melendrez.
I.
Bernal.
I.
Oshiro.
Hi.
Tamamoto. And Clark.
All right.
All right, congratulations, Richard.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, for your vote of confidence. We've got two more meetings in this term.
Uh, so let's do, I know, it's just the two more meetings, we got a vice chair position open now.
Okay, are there any nominations for vice chair?
I, I move that Commissioner Melendrez be nominated for the, for vice chair of the Neighborhood Commission.
I second.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations for vice chair? If not, uh, we'll do the same thing.
All right, roll call again. Motion on the tables to elect Commissioner Melendrez as the vice chair of this commission. Ching.
I.
Melendrez.
I.
Bernal.
I.
Oshiro.
Hi.
Tamamoto. Clark.
All right.
Thank you, congratulations, Commissioner Melendrez.
Thank you.
Ready? Next.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna move on to next item on the agenda, the Waipahu Neighborhood Board, number twenty-two. Uh, is asking for a temporary reduction of seats from nineteen to fifteen to ultimately achieve quorum. Just by way of background, I could tell you that, um, uh, Waipahu Neighborhood Board has not had in all the years that I've been on the board, a problem with reaching quorum. It's a large nineteen-member board, but it's only recently that we had a significant number of folks leave the board for a variety of reasons, so we've had, you know, a number of vacancies now. Uh, for example, three members just got elected to, uh, legislative seats in the state legislature and one on the city council, so those were three seats that we lost and others have also left. So, the, the, the current item on the agenda is to reduce the, uh, uh, current membership temporarily from nineteen to fifteen to allow the board to, uh, try to get quorum easily. It is, it's just for their next two meetings, which is May and June, and then in July, a whole new board, uh, comes on, on, on board. So, um, it's to assist them in trying to finish up business that has been pending for a while, pretty much. So, that's the, kind of backward and why, uh, this item was on the agenda. I did speak to the chair, he reinforced, uh, their desire to try to do this if possible, so. Any, 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 any questions on this matter? Our commissioners, um, Commissioner Melendrez.
Thank you, Cheryl Sherrill. Did we receive, uh, a written communication from the, the chair of that board? Or a resolution asking to, uh, decide it to be placed before our agenda and for the numbers to be reduced for a couple of months?
I'm not, I'm not, I think in writing was sent to the the commission, um, because it was on the agenda the last time, the last meeting, but I don't mean a point that the, the board didn't really discuss that. And even if it did, it, uh, we couldn't reach any decision because we didn't have quorum. So that's the dilemma that, uh, the Waipahu Board faced, and that's why, uh, the chair had asked if we could, uh, consider this action. I mean, it's not a permanent change, but it's just to assist the board, uh, finishing up business, some business that are pending, mainly approval of minutes, uh, for the next two meetings and meetings that have been, where they have been deferred.
I know that had raised from John.
I see Commissioner Ching.
So I, yeah, I guess I have a point of, I guess, inquiry. So, if I'm hearing this correctly, and I, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, um, um, and not Neighborhood Commission meeting. Um, this was, was this brought by? This was brought, I mean, there, there's been, maybe I need to rephrase my question, so it doesn't sound like there's been any formal written request. But, uh, Chair, you're saying that you have communicated with the chair of the Waipahu Neighborhood Board, and they are requesting this? I just want to make sure, um, I understand that this was discussed at the last Neighborhood Commission meeting, but, um, due to a lack of quorum of commissioners, no action was being, was, uh, able to be taken. But, I guess I'm uncomfortable with reducing the, with, with taking any motion without knowing that there's a formal request from either the chair in writing via email or, um, or any act, I gue, I guess you could say or resolution, I, I kind of agree with you, you know, uh, Stephen. I, I just, can, can you just maybe re-characterize, uh, Chair, Cheryl Sherrill on, is there, is there, is it just in communicate, or is there, is it just with the chair of the Waipahu Neighborhood Board, or has there been discussion at, um, Neighborhood, uh, Waipahu Neighborhood Board meetings about this? Do, you know, given that they can't do anything just because they're blocking?
I'll, I'll address that, and I'm not sure if the neighborhood assistant got any communication from the chair or not. Uh, and that's the reason, we didn't, we deferred this, not because we didn't have quorum the last time. Um, that was true as well, but, uh, I mentioned that we didn't have any discussion that they were bored about reducing the numbers. Uh, we have had an item on the agenda for a number of meetings now to discuss possibly changing the mix from a sub-district and at-large kind of seats to all-at-large. But, we never had that discussion because we never reached quorum, so we, you know, even if we discussed the matter, we couldn't, uh, take a vote on it, so that, it's been pending for all the, these months that we haven't been able to reach quorum. Since late, since late, uh, last year, when we, we saw the departure of members who got elected to, to office.
Sure, let's make the. Yeah, I think he really just wanted to, uh, John, yes, the question is.
Yeah, I, I, I just have the follow-up, so is it, is it, I'm looking at the, um, the N C L website, are there eight vacancies right now? Is that, is that accurate?
I believe so, and yes, it came from the chair of the Waipahu Neighborhood Board to put this on the agenda to say, hey, please help us, we can't have any action right now, so this is how we're gonna help them.
Thank you, that, that's sufficient for me, thank you, thanks, Chair.
It is temporary. Just, I see one more hand up, uh, Mr. Li.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my question would be if there are eight vacancies, but you mentioned that three people had recently been elected to higher office. Was there any attempt, uh, by the commission, I guess, to address if those other make, uh, absences from previous meetings, were they because of the chronicity of any particular members, and were those, was any attempt made to replace those non-attending members with others as per Neighbor Plan two fourteen, one oh-six F? Just didn't know if that had been considered as well.
What we have found is that we've had a number of community members who attended our meetings hoping to get appointed to the board, but we couldn't take action because we didn't have quorum. So, we believe that if, uh, the commission approves this, then it's possible that we could appoint a few people to the board, and those that have expressed interest already have run in the, uh, neighborhood board elections, and everybody that ran in this past election, all will get, uh, on the board because there were no, uh, uh, contested seats. So anybody that ran, uh, and wanna serve for the remaining, uh, uh, months, two months, uh, you know, we welcome their, uh, addition to the, the board if they come forth. And every month we have noticed that, uh, you know, we've got vacancies.
Thank you.
See one more hand, uh, Michelle Matson, proceed.
Thank you, Chair Oshiro. Uh, just to mention, reviewing some of the neighborhood board election seats, we see that there are several vacancies, and some boards are in jeopardy for the next term of not having enough members, uh, possibly for quorum, so this really needs to be revisited and analyzed apart from the Neighborhood Commission office, and I do hope that the, uh, presiding commissioners can take a lead on this, uh, to advise on how, uh, to rectify the situation so all neighborhood boards can operate efficiently and effectively in the larger public interest, not in the interest of the Neighborhood Commission office, thank you.
Okay, are there any other, uh, further questions on this matter? If not, uh, is the commission ready to take any action on this matter?
We should, we should have a proposal on the table.
If I was to move to reduce the seats from nineteen to fifteen for the remainder of the term.
See, that's, I, I think that's important, this is a temporary move, only until July. Right, so then at the next election, it'll be.
If there is a motion from the, any commissioners, then it would be, as, uh, Lloyd expressed, that this change in the number of, uh, uh, board members on the Waipahu Neighborhood Board would just be for the duration of this term, so that will be to the end of June, so May and June, and then come July, when the new board takes office, we'll be back to the nineteen-member board. And beyond that, then, you know, hopefully the board will be able to feel, feel any, uh, vacancies at the start of the big term. Uh, Commissioner Melendrez.
Chair Oshiro, um, I so moved that we allow Waipahu Neighborhood Board, for the remainder of the term, to reduce the members to fifteen per the recommendation from the chair to the neighborhood assistant and to the commission.
Thank you, is there a second? Second, it's been moved a second bit, uh, any further discussion on this matter? If not, uh, can I just ask, uh, for throw of hands? All those in favor of the motion, say aye, or raise your hands, so we can see you.
Aye.
Aye.
Stentions or? No, seeing none, uh, the motion is adopted, thank you very much. The next item on our, um, agenda is committee membership. And we should take a look at that, and I'll, uh, open it up to the commissioners. Um, let us know if you have any suggestions or preferences as we move forward on this. Um, because really it's, uh, you know, I hate to just appoint people to committees, but if they have an interest and would like to serve, you know, that's how I prefer to do it. In the meantime, you know, I leave it the way it is, and then until I hear otherwise from commissioners, and then, I know, we do have, uh, like a, you know, a chair, chair's position to, to fill, so till we get people in place, uh, you know, then we can try to finalize that, but I, I don't think that we're in a big rush, but other than that, it, do, do any of the commissioners have any, uh, uh, anything they'd like to express at this time about the committees? Uh, Commissioner Melendrez.
Chair Oshiro, are you, you're speaking about the commissions, committees?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to help you with the, uh, we talked about that before, with the Neighborhood Plan Committee. Um, we've mentioned that I've had several chairs contact me from the survey committee, saying they'd like to see this or that. And I'll, I can present this at my turn for the survey committee, but I'd like to set out a survey of the board chairs to see what they would like to have updated in the Neighborhood Plan, and then come before the commission, uh, with the statistics and proceed accordingly, according to the best interest of, uh, the boards from the commission.
And I don't think there's any, um, limitation to it, if, if a commissioner wants to serve more than one committee, uh, they're certainly able to step forward and say, I don't mind doing this or that or both of these committees. Right, and certainly if somebody has an interest and wants to serve on a particular committee, as Commissioner Melendrez has said, you know, for the Neighborhood Plan, I think that's great. Uh, a, anybody else?
Sure. I did just want to make note of that we are looking for a Neighborhood Plan Committee Chair at the moment, because that was and I understand what you said too, if, maybe we can wait until the commission is full, of all the seats.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good idea. Just three. Uh, is that, Mr. Melendrez, do you want to say something else?
Well, he disagreed with what you said about holding off maybe for the Neighborhood Plan Committee Chair.
Yeah, because, for example, is, what I would suggest, like, if he's, with his interest, you know, I add his name to the Neighborhood Plan Committee already, and then Stephen, if, if you could continue serving as survey committee chair, I mean, you can, you can continue to do that as well, if you don't mind. Uh, and we can add people to the committees as we, we, we hear what their interests may be.
Sure, sure, we're in agreement.
Okay.
So just to clarify, would, uh, Commissioner Melendrez like to be, uh, added to the Neighborhood Plan?
Yeah, I just add him and need the, yeah. Yeah, I just add it and keep the Chair open until we, we have a full slate that we don't want it, and you know, a Chair can be appointed or elected by the members.
Perfect. Well, you want to just ask for the commissioners if there's any objection to Melendres being appointed to the Neighborhood Plan Committee?
Uh, I don't hear any objections unless somebody raises their hands to that action. So I think we're good on that. And Commissioner Clark has, uh, a lot of experience in Neighborhood Board matters, so he would be an asset to, I'm sure any of the committees he, you know, might want to sit on.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to know what are about the committees.
Sure. Elections Committee, for example, uh, you know, if there's a need to.
I'm not sure if this time.
Oh, okay, okay, no, that's fine. Uh, but yeah, okay, it's a work in progress. We'll leave this matter on the agenda in terms of committee structure and then, you know.
Good idea.
People think about it, you know, they can let us know and, you know, we can put them on the committee. So, um, okay, is there any, are there any other comments or questions from anybody else on this area? If not, uh, we want to, uh, boy, we're in announcements.
Now we're on committee reports.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, seven.
No, I'm sorry. We, 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 we didn't approve our minutes.
We can go back to that now.
We can go back to that now. So we have two sets of minutes that we need to approve. Uh, March twenty-eighth, regular meeting minutes, and, uh, April twenty-fourth memorandum for the record. So, uh, I hope everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. So do we have any, um, motions to add on, uh, these items? Can take a minute, take a look at them. In the meantime, I see a hand up. For Mr. Li, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to again reiterate that I did speak with Executive Secretary Yonanaka earlier today. So the comment I'll make here is to put us back in time to two months ago for the March twenty-twenty-three, uh, preliminary draft meeting minutes. And what I post to the chat is a request to accurately present a true reflection of the matters that were discussed at that meeting and the views expressed by the participants. And so I would ask that the draft meeting minutes be modified before adoption to reflect the following. In the section of Public Concerns under the subitem Various Concerns, and the comment attributed to me from section one, uh, just to document that I was not asking at that time about the specific Neighborhood Plan in question, but rather asking why the requests about that section had not been addressed. And so it's more to reiterate the need for, uh, trying to ensure that the Neighborhood Commission Office is timely and its, uh, uh, attempts to address questions that are duly posed as per the Neighborhood Plan. So the text is presented in the chat. I can read it aloud if, if you would like, but the request is to make that very minor modification uh, to comply with the Neighborhood Plan. Thank you.
Can you try that again?
I see Michelle Matson's hand up. Uh, you can speak. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair Oshiro. I agree with Kevin Li. And in addition, I apologize for being precluded from the Public Concerns portion, but I would like to ask and request when the Neighborhood Commission meeting videos will be posted on the Neighborhood Commission website for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. This will allow the larger public to understand what truly and completely happened and was stated at the Neighborhood Commission meetings, rather than, uh, just, uh, brief, uh, summaries of minutes that may or may not be complete. We've had this problem with our own Neighborhood Board of meeting minutes being restricted. We have very complex issues. We have over three-hour meetings that are, uh, restricted to three hours or less, including setup and takedown. We do not have a way to completely operate in the public interest. So we would expect the Neighborhood Commission to do so on their own merit by posting their meeting videos and allowing our meetings to be fully completed in the public interest. Thank you.
Any other, um, comments on, or questions on the minutes? If not, I'll entertain motions to, uh, move forward with them from the commission. Do we have a motion?
Uh, this is Commissioner Cheng. Uh, yep, I make a motion to adopt, um, approval of minutes for the Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, regular meeting minutes, and also the, uh, Monday, April twenty-fourth memorandum of the record.
One second.
Um, I second it, but also in taking to accord the, uh, comments by Mr. Li.
So, are, are you amending, uh, the main motion, uh, Commissioner Melendres to adopt?
I think we need, uh, I'd like to have our, in that particular line item, I'd like to have the, our NA take a look at that, and, um, like Mr. Li said, it's a minor item, but he did bring it forward to the commission. So I'd like our NA to take a look at that, and if it looks like it needs to be amended, it's a minor item, then we can do that.
Uh, just for clarification, uh, the motion on the table was to adopt both of the minutes as written, so first one and the second, and in that discussion period, you could then amend the motion if you'd like.
So, Commissioner Cheng, do you agree with, uh?
I, I, I will, um, well, I guess I don't want to say I would, uh, can I have, uh, Mr. Li restate his verbally? I know, I know you did send that also, just for context for, for, for me.
Uh, yes, thank you, Commissioner. The change would be in the March meeting minutes under the Public Concerns section. Item Various Concerns. Li Voice Requests Regarding, Number One, Explanation Why Requests Duly Submitted Per Neighborhood Plan Two eleven one oh four B. For Clarification Regarding Neighborhood Plan Two fourteen one fifteen B, Relating to Recusal of Board Members Were Not Acknowledged or Addressed. And the remainder of that section would remain as initially drafted.
I take it it's in the chat, although we cannot see the chat, so, um, Dylan, I take it you can, you can take a look at that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Uh, so I guess you could say I'll amend. I don't know if that's accurate. Uh, let me just make a new motion. So, um, I moved to adopt both the March, as I previously stated, the March twenty-twenty-three, and also the, um, April memorandum of the record. Um, but, uh, accepting a proposal from, um, Mr. Li, which I think he just posted in the chat, um, I guess that, that's my motion.
That's for the March?
Yes, the March, for the March twenty-eighth, adopting amendments or suggested amendments by Mr. Li.
That's fine.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing on, uh, are we ready for the vote? If everybody, uh, all those in favor, raise your hand. Aye.
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 So we have one, two.
You're allowed to, but you know, feel comfortable.
No, what? So we got, we got everybody's approval, so we got five. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Chair, great. So just to clarify, the March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three minutes were adopted with the amendments proposed by Mr. Li. The Monday, April twenty-fourth memorandum for the record is adopted as written, uh, as it's a memorandum anyway. They have to go whatever it needs to.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, that was the only item that we needed to take action on, and we did, thankfully. So, uh, we're back to announcements?
Committee, committee reports.
Oh, wait, committee reports? I'm sorry. We just talked about the committee, but we didn't receive any reports. Uh, Elections Committee, um, I think we had discussion already about what happened. Election is over, and the, uh, ballot counting will proceed on May thirtieth, as Mr. Yonanaka, uh, mentioned earlier, and then the results will be published on Thursday, June first. So that's the Elections Report. Uh, Survey Committees, Commissioner Melendres, anything to report?
No, I think it'd be timely though to put out a survey after the, uh, uh, new members are in place, and so we'll do that during the, uh, look at doing that during the month of June. But I'll publish the, uh, I'll send the recommendations to all the commissioners before sending it out, and if we need to, we'll wait till the commission meeting in June before we send it out.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Neighborhood Plan Committee, I don't think we have a report. We didn't meet, but I know that, uh, in the new term, likely have, uh, you know, a lot of work to be done in that areas. Uh, that's upcoming. If not, we'll move on to the next item. Announcements? We have any announcements? Well, the next meeting of the commission will be scheduled on Monday, June twenty-sixth at six P M. Here a couple of mahali. Are there any other announcements at this time? Not the, meeting is adjourned. Commissioners can stay tuned in as we will move to, um, our duty carrying matters after this. Thank you.